To this study session team and then we'll blaze through a couple of short meetings and get to the main event. Well, good evening, everybody. The time is 6:15 PM. Today is Tuesday, April 19th, 2022, and I would like to call to order this special study session of the Emeryville City Council. This meeting is being conducted via video teleconference pursuant to exemptions to the Brown Act authorized by Assembly Bill 361. In response to the COVID-19 pandemic, the governor has declared a state of emergency. The city of Emeryville, every 30 days pursuant to AB 361, will take a vote to determine whether or not both the state of emergency continues to exist and whether it's in the self and safety and health interests of the public, our staff, and our members to continue to meet via teleconference. You can join this meeting by joining us on Zoom. The city council's agendas are posted online and the links to these meetings here are posted in those agendas. You can use the raise hand feature in Zoom to provide public comment when we call for that, and you can use star nine if you're joining us by telephone. If you'd like to submit a written comment in advance of this meeting, there is an online speaker form on the city's website under the city council agendas. It says submit online speaker form here, and the city clerk will provide the content of your speaker card when we reach the appropriate agenda item. With that, I would like to ask if the city clerk would please kindly take the roll call.
Councilmember Donahue?
Here.
Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
Councilmember Welch?
Here.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Here.
And Mayor Bouters.
Here. Thank you all for being present. Is there anyone who would like to make a motion to approve this agenda?
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Medina, second by Member Welch to approve this agenda, please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouters.
Aye. Item four is Ex parte communications. We have one agenda item tonight, which is our study session under item six. I'll begin. Member Donahue, do you have any ex parte communications report?
Yes, I met with a member of the marketplace development team.
Okay. Member Martinez, do you have anything to report?
Not since the last time we took up this item, but I will report that before this was scheduled last time, I did meet with Rick Robbins and representatives of Wareham.
Okay, thank you. Member Walsh, do you have anything to report?
Same as Councilmember Martinez, no new ex parte communications, but previously I did meet with Mr. Robbins.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Medina?
Same as my colleagues Martinez and Welch.
Okay. I have had meetings with members of Wareham Development. I've also met with Mark Steffen and the public market, and I will just note for the record, I believe all council members received earlier today communication from legal representatives of Wareham Development with respect to Agenda Item Six. Okay, that concludes ex parte communications. This is the opportunity for public comment for items that are not on today's agenda. There will be public comment for the agenda item itself. Members of the public who wish to comment for an item not on the study sessions' agenda will have one minute. Seeing no hand, okay. Brian Donahue will be recognized for one minute, please. Good evening.
Go ahead.
So I just wanted to let the five of you know, plus the two, that the the chief of police, Jeff Jennings, determined that, you read the California Vehicle Code, and he determined that in Emeryville, his take of the vehicle code is that in Emeryville, vehicles are allowed to block bike lanes. I think you're all aware of this. The city attorney that the city hired at your last meeting about this, Ms. Crowell, in the staff report, it indicated, she's very cagey, but she hinted that it is in fact okay for vehicles to block bike lanes. That's what the staff report letter said. However, in her personal letter to me, that you directed her to answer, she was unequivocal, no, it's against the California Vehicle Code for vehicles to block bike lanes. So that sort of crazy public policy, like, you know, all over the map, then we have, you know.
Thank you. That's your time. The vote is now over. Okay, any other members to wish to comment on an item not on this agenda? Seeing none, public comment is now closed and we'll move to the agenda item. So Item Six is our study session tonight, which is on Marketplace redevelopment project parcels A, B, and F, and I believe Miru Desai and Charlie Bryant will present this item.
Thank you, Mayor Bouters. Senior Planner Miru Desai will be making the staff presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Bouters and council members. I am Miru Desai, and I would be making this presentation along with Chad Smalley, the Economic Development and Housing Manager. This is the second study session on the project. The council first saw this in November of last year. The purpose of this study session is to solicit comments on the PUD PDP amendment and the DAA amendment. Next slide, please. So this, as you know, is the approved PUD PDP that was approved by the council back in 2008, and it allows up to 674 residential units and 300,000 square feet of commercial space in addition to a new park, as well as two new streets and realignment of Shell Mount Street. Next slide, please. Between 2015 and 2020, the Planning Commission approved several FTPs for parcels D, C, B, and A. C and D have been built. The park has also been built. There are existing entitlements which have not yet been built for parcel A and B, and there are no entitlements or no FTP for parcel F. Next slide, please. So like I mentioned, there are two existing unbuilt entitlements on parcel A and B. Parcel A accommodates 167 units, and parcel B accommodates research and development space accommodating 150,000 square feet of office and lab uses with some ground floor retail space and of course associated parking. The PUD PDP shows a residential tower on parcel A, but the conditions of approval of the PUD allow conversion to R&amp;D users provided that there are at least 10 ton homes on it. So any proposal that does not at the minimum include 10 residential units on parcel A will require a PUD PDP amendment. Next slide, please. This project also has a development agreement that was approved by the council in December of 2015, covering a variety of topics, but the interest here today is Section 7.1, which stipulates that parcel A shall include 18 affordable units. In addition, the section also states that unless the city finds compelling reasons to the contrary, the affordable units shall be dispersed throughout the development. So any proposal that does not include 18 affordable units on parcel A will require an amendment to the development agreement. Next slide, please. So the project proposal for FTP for A and B is to replace the existing entitlements that I've just mentioned with three buildings. Two of them will be research and development buildings accommodating a little over 400,000 square feet, and one parking structure accommodating 711 spaces. Next slide, please. So this proposal was reviewed by the council in November. You can see parcel A and B on the slide. Next slide, please. And these elevations should also be very familiar to you as these were shown in the November 20 study session. This is the view from the east looking at the bridge connection. Next slide, please. This is the stair as it lands on the Shell Mount Street, again, something that you've seen in November. Next slide, please. And at the November study session, the council expressed support for the architecture and the bridge connection, and did make some suggestions to improve the bicycle and pedestrian connections. The council, however, did express concern for the lack of housing units. During the study session, the applicant suggested a potential contribution to the Affordable Housing Fund in lieu of providing 18 affordable units on parcel F that they were proposing at that time. The applicant stated that the currently entitled residential project for 167 units is financially not feasible. At that time, the council directed staff to negotiate the amount of a potential monetary contribution from the applicant. So since then, staff has been working with the applicant team towards this negotiation of monetary contribution. Next slide, please. And now I would like to hand this over to Chad Smalley.
Thank you, Miru. Chad Smalley, Economic Development and Housing Manager. So as Miru mentioned, we engaged with the applicant to discuss a potential contribution and started that discussion with the understanding that the project as proposed also includes a contribution to affordable housing fees through the Affordable Housing Impact Fee in any case. And so, understanding the total amount that would be provided by the project to support affordable housing, the current Affordable Housing Impact Fee is $4.83 per square foot for both research and development and retail uses. And with the applicant's proposal, these would total a little less than $2 million. These would be paid at building permit issuance. The additional contribution, excuse me, that the applicant has proposed is a little over $15 million, which would be paid at the temporary certificate of occupancy for the first R&amp;D building to be completed at the site. And so the total that the applicant's proposing in order to not build the 18 units would be $17 million total, $2 million of which is the Affordable Housing Impact Fee, which is required anyway. Next slide, please. So just to frame that and to understand that number, the $17 million total is about eight and a half times what would be required, the $2 million for the R&amp;D project itself. The previously entitled residential project, 167 units, included affordable units. And so in that case, no Affordable Housing Impact Fee would be required if they built the previously entitled 167 unit project, which they've, again, indicated is not financially feasible. Theoretically, 167 unit market rate residential project that didn't include any affordable housing units would pay an affordable housing impact fee of about $5.3 million, and the $17 million proposed by the applicant is about 2.8 times that amount. We engaged a consultant in reviewing this proposal, and our estimated cost of the 18 unit affordable housing building to the developers right around 11, between 11 and 12 million dollars. So in total, this just provides some context for what $17 million looks like as compared to fees that are required on the project or would be required under a theoretical project and exceed the amount of construction costs that would be required to build an 18 unit building on its own. Next slide, please. And that concludes our presentation. We have just three questions for the council's consideration in the study session. One, does the council agree with the proposal to amend this PUD PDP to transfer the requirement for the 10 ton homes from parcel A to parcel F? And then two, does the council agree with the proposal to pay approximately $15 million in exchange for removing the DAA requirement to construct 18 units of affordable housing on parcel A? And then finally, any other comments or questions? And with that, I'll take any questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Just to confirm, staff, are there no, is there no applicant presentation this evening?
There is an applicant presentation.
Okay, so members, do you wish to hear that? You want to ask your questions first? Okay. Okay, Member Martinez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted staff or the applicant to remind me how many units of housing have been built through the PUD so far.
482.
Thank you.
Did you have other questions, Member Martinez?
No, that was it. Thank you.
Okay. Vice Mayor Medina?
Yeah, my question was to clarify from staff report. So the last time we saw this project, there were 565 proposed parking spaces, and this point is 883. Is that correct?
It has been reduced to 711 at this time.
Okay, but increased from the last time we saw it from 565.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, others with questions before we move to the applicant presentation? Okay, thank you, Miru. We will welcome, it's like Mark Steffen, Lauren Kraus, and a couple other folks to give us a presentation. I would ask that your presentation be completed within less than 10 minutes, and that you do not duplicate things staff had presented. Thank you.
Good evening, council. Will our presentation be uploaded on the screen? I don't see it there. Okay, great. Miru, thank you for the very thorough presentation, and thanks to Christine and Chad and the city council for your work preparing and reviewing this proposal. My name is Mark Steffen, President of City Center Realty Partners. Before the council considers the proposed in lieu residential fee, I want to take a very brief moment to touch on a few of the significant contributions that CCRP, working together with city staff, the Planning Commission, and the city council, have made to the public market over the last 10 years. Next slide, please. This is a site plan of the public market in 2012, and essentially, an office and retail project with suburban-style surface parking fields. Next slide, please. This is what Shell Mount Road alignment looked like in 2012. Notice, no bike lanes. Over the last eight years, we've made many improvements to the public market district. Next slide, please. We've realigned Shell Mount and created bike lanes, some fully protected. Based on feedback from the community, the Planning Commission, the BPAC, and when we were last in front of the city council, we will be adding a six-inch by six-inch curb between the cars and bike traffic lanes to create a fully protected bike lane from Shell Mount Way all the way to 64th Street. Next slide, please. We'll also be dramatically improving the staircase from Amtrak to Shell Mount to the public market. The new grand staircase will include two bike tracks to ease the passage of bikes over the rail tracks. Below the grand staircase will be a new bike pavilion with storage for 120 bikes, including space for cargo bikes and charging facilities for electric bikes. Next slide, please. We completely renovated the food hall and brought high-quality and diverse food purveyors to the market. Next slide, please. We completely re-envisioned Christie Park and nearly doubled its size so that it could become the beloved Christie Park it is today. Next slide, please. CCRP in Oxford understand the community's need for housing. 479 housing units have been constructed and dispersed throughout the public market district, specifically at, excuse me, next slide, please. Specifically at 64th and Christie, parcel D and parcel C. Next slide, please. These 479 units equate to 80% of the total new housing units provided in the last five years, and 30% of the total new housing units when you add in Sherwin-Williams and Bayview. As I mentioned in my last presentation to the city council, CCRP worked with Avalon Bay for over four years to design and approve for housing at parcel A. In spite of all of the time and effort, Avalon told us in 2019 that due to high construction costs, they could not afford to move forward with residential project on parcel A. They should know the economics of constructing multifamily, as they build as much residential product in the Bay Area as anyone. Nevertheless, CCRP took a hard look at the numbers as well to see if we could find a way to make the housing work economically. Increasing construction costs only reinforced what Avalon had told us. It was not economically feasible to build the residential. This was also confirmed as we reached out to potential lenders and capital partners. 5850 Christie, our neighbor to the west, commissioned an economic study, peer-reviewed by the city, which confirmed Avalon Bay's and CCRP's conclusion. It is not economically feasible to build multifamily residential housing. I would now like to introduce Lauren Kraus, VP of Development for Oxford Properties, to discuss in a bit more detail the benefits of the proposed in lieu fee.
Thanks, Mark, and thanks to city staff and city council for your time this evening. My name is Lauren Kraus, and I recently joined Oxford Properties Group. I'm a California native, and for the last 15 years, I focused on working with communities on residential-led, mixed-use projects along the West Coast and the Bay Area specifically, including Berkeley and Oakland for the last 10 years. I look forward to meeting those of you who I've not had the chance to meet with yet. As Mark mentioned, the market rate residential previously contemplated on parcel A is not feasible, primarily due to rising construction costs. Our new plan activates the remaining surface parcels and incorporates the affordable housing units stipulated by the development agreement. As Miru and Chad have outlined, and as you can see from this slide, next slide, please. Or the next slide. Thanks. By providing 18 affordable units on parcel F, our proposed investment in affordable housing would be approximately $11 million. Based on the focus of the total residential unit count, we believe our proposed solution enables the construction of more affordable housing units than the originally contemplated parcel F construction. Instead of proceeding with the residential building on parcel F, we'd like to contribute $17 million towards the completion of affordable housing onto to be determined parcels, possibly partnering with an affordable housing developer to leverage tax credit financing. As we've heard, the cost studies indicate that parcel X contemplated 18 affordable units would cost approximately $11 million. By increasing the contribution to $17 million and by using the same per-unit cost, we estimate that approximately 28 units could be constructed. By using tax credit financing, possibly even more additional units could be developed. I appreciate your consideration and thoughts tonight. We think that we've proposed an effective solution to complete the public market mixed-use district and fund the creation of a meaningful number of new affordable housing units. Thanks again for your time, and we look forward to the council's feedback on the topic. I'll turn it over to Tom Fortier with our design team to discuss architecture and massing.
Thank you, Lauren. Thank you, Mark. Next, please. And thank you, city staff and city council. It's good to be with you again. Look forward to continuing this conversation. We'd like to do a quick recap of the proposed massing on the site and compare it to both the PDP and the previously approved FTP. And just point out that with these three buildings referenced prior, that the massing has been distributed specifically to fall within the confines and limits set forth in the PDP and the FTP. We've also lowered the mass, well, so parcel A, you can see an eight-story tower falling within the 120, excuse me, parcel B on the right, within the 120-foot, with the exception of rooftop appurtenances and mechanical equipment allowances above that line. The middle science building is at 60 feet, far below the 175. The separation of buildings between the middle one and the one on the left on parcel A is such that the view corridor is preserved and accessed directly from the bridge crossing over to the top of the landing. Next slide, please. I think that the massing is better demonstrated when you look at it compared to the FTP. Again, you can see the eight-story Life Sciences building falls directly within the parameters set in that FTP. The middle science building is at 60 feet, which is at the lower height limit in that area. We're not building up to the 90-foot height limit in parcel A that has been identified, and the garage is maintained at 5210. The separation, again, between the buildings is right between the middle Life Sciences building and the garage to the south to receive pedestrians on the bridge over to the landing at the top of the stair. I will note also that the 70-foot separation between buildings in the previous FTP has been increased to well over 100 feet, thus increasing the view corridor. Next, please. Also, this comparison here, this looks at our proposed development. The lower diagram is at approximately 38 or 40 feet above grade, so it is as though you're standing on the elevation of the podium across the street and at the elevation of the bridge crossing. And you can see from this vantage point, the views that are maintained are significantly improved above and beyond that from approved with FTP and the PDP. Next, please. More significantly, if you look at an aerial view, and this would be from the eighth floor of a property across the railroad tracks, that view is dramatically improved with no higher buildings at 90 or 75 feet in front to block the view. The separation between the buildings occurs at a point where you can see down into the entry of the public market, and as you cross the bridge, next, please, you come to the top landing of the stair or access elevators, both of which bring you down to a very important and prominent public plaza across from the entry to the public market. Next, please. From the west looking east, what's significant and important here is the wayfinding, the visual access to that bridge and to the east side, properties on the east side of the tracks, the views that are maintained for the residences across the tracks, but also the visual surveillance that occurs, just having all of this public access being exposed in a way that increases security on the site. Next, please. And that is it, and we will open this up for your discretion for questions.
Thank you. Members, do you have clarifying questions for the applicant before I take public comment? Okay, seeing no questions at this time, now is the time for public comment. Members of the public who wish to comment on the proposed study session item will be given two minutes to do so this evening, two minutes for public comment, and I'd like to first recognize Parissa Peamani, please. Good evening. Please unmute Parissa and go ahead.
Can you hear me okay?
You can hear you now. Go ahead.
Thank you. So as you know, my name is Parissa Peamani. I have been working in Emeryville self-employed since January of 2000 to the present time. I live in Emeryville since 2003, and I sent my daughter to Emeryville Child Development Center, so I'm very devoted to stay in this town. And I am your neighbor across the railroad track residential terraces. So we understand about the parcel A, and I just have to say, I have seen many developers come with many designs, and I have to say, this is by far one of the most attractive and more desirable and aesthetically sound designs I have seen thus far. So I really appreciate the developer and the architect for this. But as far as the parcel A, I understand there is a need for affordable housing, but if any measures can be made that, yeah, any measures can be made that affordable housing not be placed on top of parcel A at that existing height that it has, it would be very much appreciated. It's just that a lot of us at the terraces, we put on with the sound of the railroad track all day in compensation for the view that we have, and if anything be placed on top of parcel A would really block our view. So if you can keep parcel A as the height that they have designed it, I would really appreciate it. That's all.
Any other members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Okay, please recognize Brian Donahue for two minutes.
Okay, I presume you can hear me now.
You can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, first of all, Mark Steffen, the developer, said that he doubled the size of the park, Christie Avenue Park. That is patently false. He added .2 acres, and for the number of residents he's put into the neighborhood, the offset for the park acreage for the new residents doesn't come close to what's prescribed in the Emeryville General Plan of 3 acres per thousand new residents. As a matter of fact, this project is one of the worst projects vis-à-vis parks of any modern project, any project for many years. I'm sorry.
Wait, hold on one second, Brian. Please mute the prior speakers. Okay, please continue. Apologies.
Okay, so Mr. Steffen is wrong when he says he's doubled it. It's only .2 acres, and it's a terrible record for parks. Okay, but the most shocking thing is this developer, Mr. Steffen, has come to you tonight claiming poverty, saying that his project is not economically feasible to build it with the housing that he originally proposed, that you guys said yes to. So this reminds me of several years ago, when he came to the council and he said that 11% affordability, quote, "won't pencil out," he said, he told you. As a matter of fact, Councilmember Donahue and Martinez were both on the council at the time when he said that, but Councilmember Jack Asher led a drive to call his bluff, and then he came back later with 11% affordable housing like they had requested at first. So he was caught in a lie. He said it wouldn't pencil out at 6% or at 11%, and that's why he's asking for 6%. So the guy has no credibility. Further, moving poor people around the project to different parts is sort of like, you know, it's a reminder of like the poor door idea, where developers put the poor people on one area because they're undesirable. I hope that's not what's happening here. I haven't studied it closely enough, but watch out for poor door shifting around of poor people. It's really odious, and we don't want to live in a community like that. But the main takeaway, though, is the developer lied to us in the past when he said.
That was your time.
Okay, so you've heard. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Other members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, the public comment is now closed. Can we put Tom Fortier unmute? If you can do that, that'd be great. Okay, so we will now go to discussion. Okay, so we will now go to discussion, and just to prompt the council's discussion staff, can you just recap briefly the items you're looking to have feedback on? Is it just general comments and feedback about the application at the stage we have it today?
Yes, of course. The first question is, does the council agree with the proposal to amend the PUD, PDB, to transfer the requirement for ten-town homes from parcel A to parcel F? And the other question is, does the council agree with the applicant's proposal to pay a little over fifteen million dollars in exchange for removing the DA requirement to construct eighteen affordable units on parcel A?
Thank you. And Maru, would it be appropriate for council members, if they had other design feedback, they could give that tonight, correct?
Anything, that is correct. And the third question is, any other comments that they may have?
Okay, great. So, members, I have a number of thoughts related to the housing proposal. I traditionally always invite others to go first. I'll just note that I have some suggestions on that, but would like to invite others who wish to comment first on the portability under the PUD and the DA to move the ten-town homes that are required to parcel F, as has been requested through an amendment, and/or the request or suggestion, or I should say, offer of a cash payment of seventeen million dollars of in-lug fees to cover housing affordability options for the city. Are there folks who wish to open with that, or would people like to hear what I have some thoughts on? Member Donahue, go ahead.
Well, this is a question about that. We received a letter from the Lieutenant Tucker LLP about this issue, and they imply that we would be breaking new state laws to do that. And I'm wondering if our attorney has looked at that and what Mr. Kennedy thinks about that.
So before I ask Mr. Kennedy to answer, Mr. Donahue, you're asking an item that would be relevant to potential litigation, as I believe that that letter was sent outlining some legal concerns. I think that if you'd like to receive a legal response to that question from the city attorney, we could potentially arrange for you to have that in a memo if that would be okay with you.
Yes, that would be okay.
Okay, is that acceptable to staff as well? Yes, to prepare a response to Mr. Donahue's question in a memo, since it is of a legal nature? Mr. Kennedy, agree?
That's fine.
Okay, Mr. Donahue, do you have any other questions? No, not right now? Okay.
Not right now.
Thank you. Member Martinez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to ask the applicant to discuss the amount of parking spaces that are proposed in this new proposal. As Vice Mayor Medina had noted, it had gone up from five-sixty-five to seven-hundred-and-eleven between the two proposals, so would love to hear the methodology behind that.
Yeah, my recollection and the rest of the team, you can help me on this, but the last time we presented this project, I think, was in front of the planning commission, and it was, it actually had eight-hundred-some-odd parking spaces, and it had one level below-grade parking, and we removed that level below-grade parking. The, I think that when it was five hundred spaces, it may have been the previously approved FDP.
Thank you.
Others with questions or comments? Vice Mayor Medina?
Yeah, I would comment that, in general, I'm amenable to transferring where the housing can go on the property if we are receiving adequate concessions from the developer in order to revise the FDP. However, I'm not sure about this exact amount, and I would be if it were just a tit-for-tat housing, but I think we also should consider the fact that there is a hundred-and-fifty space, parking spaces, being added to this project since we, as a council, have last seen this project. What planning commission discussed is what planning commission discussed. It's a hundred-and-forty-six, I think, spaces increase. That's a ginormous amount of parking spaces. In addition to that, there is a significant massing change, and I'd note that when looking at the new proposal, and there's three buildings now, they've expanded, I mean, God, I have to do cardinal directions here, they've expanded the walkway that's on the south, the south side of the center building, but on the north side of the center building, there's still a very narrow, tiny gap again, which does create a wall-like factor, which I think two of my previous council members put in the notes for the FDP that we should avoid at all costs in two thousand and fifteen. So I just want to be sensitive to the fact that FDP is asking for significant changes in addition to not building the housing. And I know that for all of us, building housing in our city is of critical importance. So those are the factors that I'm considering when I look at this project.
Thank you. Others with comments right now? Member Donahue?
Well, I have further questions about the parking.
That's fine.
Is the parking entirely private and controlled and for use of the tenants only? Or is it also have the ability for the general public to park there?
May I answer that question?
You may. Go ahead.
I think it would be helpful, there's a slide that was the end of our deck, that we could bring that up, because this parking garage is open to the public and is going to provide parking not just for the new life science building, but also to replace the parking that's currently on parcel A that serves a variety of the uses in the building. And if we can bring up the last page of our deck, it does a good job, and the next page after that. I wonder, the last one after the thank you. So this gives you a sense of where parking is going. So, you know, first of all, in the office tower, Shellmount Street there, we have a commitment to the owner of the office tower, which is not our group, to provide three-hundred-and-thirty spaces per an REA agreement. So a hundred-and-twenty-five of those spaces are going to parcel C, and then two-hundred-and-fifty-three spaces are going to parcel A. We also have to park, you see, the two-story, the fifty-seven spaces, which is just below the tower, that's where you have two stories of office, that those spaces need to be parked over parcel A. We've got for the food hall and the restaurant space along the front, we have a hundred-and-forty-two spaces going to parcel A, and eighty-one spaces going to Market Drive. And then to park Urban and Court Power Yoga and Guitar Center, we've got those spaces going to A. So when you take all those spaces away, we've really got about a hundred-and-fifty-nine spaces that are being parked for the Life Science Tower in parcel A. But the point of all this is just to be clear, this garage has to serve a lot of other people and sources beyond just the demand for the life science.
Member Donahue, do you have follow-up questions to that?
No, that's good to hear, the number analysis. Thank you.
You're welcome. Maru?
I'd just like to add a clarification regarding parking. The five-hundred-and-sixty-five parking spaces, those were proposed at the time when they were, the existing entitlement for a hundred-and-fifty-thousand-square-feet of R and D. So what you saw last year for a bigger R and D space, that was a higher number, so if that makes any sense. So when the R and D space on parcel B was a hundred-and-fifty-thousand-square-feet, the parking at that time was five-sixty-five. Today, the R and D space is about four-hundred-thousand-square-feet, and the parking is seven-hundred-and-eleven.
Right. Yeah, last time we came before you, we had eight hundred spaces, and then this time we removed the lower level and took away a hundred-some-odd spaces.
Maru, did you have anything else you wanted to say?
Just like to confirm that Mark is correct. The parking garage will also include parking for the existing, the old market hall that exists, because right now, the parking for that existing marketplace is in the surface parking of what is parcel A.
Okay, thank you. Others who have comments or questions? Did anyone have design feedback before we talk more about housing? I just want to, I'll say a few things then. I want to thank the applicant for a couple of things I heard. I heard that the proposal now includes, I'm assuming, Mark, that you're removing the parking on Shellmount Street in order to accommodate the bike lanes with the curb separation?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so I want to appreciate that, as I think that's an important improvement, and I heard a number of things related to bike storage and charging. I'll give folks my take on the housing proposal. It's a complicated situation. The city is longstanding reputation of being a champion in building housing, and one of the few things that can be an Achilles' heel for all Bay Area communities right now is there isn't a lack of demand for housing. It's not that there is no need for housing. That's not the problem. The problem is material costs and some of the labor associated with it right now due to other types of construction and due to the scarcity of certain materials. We had this, as was noted in one of the presentations, we had this same challenge come up with a neighboring project, and the staff endeavored to fact-check that assertion by doing their own independent analysis of the feasibility of producing housing. And one of the unique challenges of building housing in Emeryville is that when you cost out housing, the costs here are largely the same as they might be in, say, San Francisco, but the rents are much less than they have been in San Francisco. And likewise, the rents that you receive per square foot for a residential project in Emeryville when costs are high are much lower when compared with the rents you can receive right now for lab space. So I think, just speaking generally and not to this project specifically, this is what we're seeing right now, is that some of the changes taking shape are due to the impact that material costs are having. And so I don't think this is going to be an isolated situation for us to consider. So I share that at the outset, because I think we need to be mindful of the fact that this is probably not going to be a standalone issue. So as a policy matter, how do we want to address this? I would note that this application does have an approved FDP already for both parcels, so they have the ability to build housing on parcel A, and they have the ability to build their prior-approved building on parcel B if we were to leave it be. We don't have actually an obligation to do anything, right? This is an approval they're seeking that requires discretionary council discussion of both a PDP and a development agreement amendment. I personally think that if you make a bargain for agreement, and that is what the development agreement from two thousand and fifteen was, if you make a bargain for agreement, then there's equitability considerations when you change that agreement partway through the agreement. So the public market received benefits, and they conferred benefits as well. I want to be clear that Christie Park is one of them upon the community in exchange for things that were required. They were given the opportunity to integrate eighteen affordable housing units, and they chose to put them in parcel A, which was kind of the last parcel to be built, and now they're not looking to do that. Well, the market has changed since two thousand and fifteen, and so now it's not financially convenient to do that. They have offered, however, solutions, and we're being asked to consider them. I personally believe that the seventeen million dollars that's been proposed is too low. I believe it's too low because I believe that the impact on present-day value of funding to construct and provide affordability is, diminishes the moment. It's like buying a car. As soon as you take it off the lot, it depreciates in value. That's going to be the same for us, and the cost of materials, if we were to program that money with a nonprofit builder, is going to be no different than the challenges the developer is facing, right? So whereas the developer's goal is profits, our obligation is simply how many units can we actually construct in the end with it. So while I appreciate the assessment that's been done and the thought that's been put into the proposal, and I'm actually willing and open to supporting a proposal, I just want to flag, without being specific, that I think that the dollar amount proposed is too low. And I also think that the tiering structure provided for paying the fees to the city, so the one-point-nine-nine-million dollars which would have been paid at the outset and the balance being paid at the TCO of the first building, the temporary certificate of occupancy, I think that that needs to be further hybridized, and that, in fact, more money should be paid upfront in consideration for making a change like this, so that the city is not waiting until development has matured and in other places that benefit the applicant to actually make good on our opportunity to do housing now, because every day that's wasted is actual further depreciation of whatever investment we will receive from them. But I think that there's some nuance to this, and I don't know that it is in our benefit at a study session to negotiate this with the developer here. So my proposal, if the council will support it, is I would like, since I've caucused with the vice mayor on this item, I would like to propose that the vice mayor and I serve as negotiating parties solely for the purpose of discussing with the applicant offline what might be a feasible and recommendable package of financial resources that could be brought back to this council by us as a recommendation for your full discussion, support, endorsement, and vote. So that would be something I just put out on the table, that I think it's not prudent to openly discuss these types of financial matters in a public meeting, but that those types of discussions, as the city staff have attempted to do on our behalf for the past number of months, might be best facilitated by sending an ad hoc group to do that and bring back a recommendation. So I'll put that on the table as just one suggestion, and I'm open to hearing what others have to say. Member Welch?
Thank you, Mayor Bowers. You know, I want to co-sign what you were saying about the, you know, feeling that the amount was too low, but also I want to note, you know, here in Emeryville, we're not working with that much land. So once something is built up and we've agreed, you know, okay, we'll take the money, but the land is gone, then the opportunity to build, the opportunity to have those units available in that space is gone. So I want to keep in mind, you know, you bring up San Francisco, and, you know, they're a big city in a sense, but they're also not working with that much land either, but we're working with such a smaller amount. It's sometimes, in-lug fees and the practice, I understand it as a realist in general, but I do not like it because of the opportunity that is then lost with the land. The land is now gone, and then the responsibility then falls back on to the city on that development piece. So I just wanted to note that, but I understand the predicament around cost and those challenges. So I want to make clear that I understand the challenges, but want to remind all of us, like, we're working with such limited space, so we have to be strategic when we make these type of decisions. Thank you.
I appreciate your voice and for saying that. Thank you very much. Member Martinez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am fully supportive of having you and our vice mayor speak with the developer, and I'm hoping that you'll, in those conversations, will continue to discuss massing, parking, and bike pedestrian improvements, especially as they pertain to parking, so that we get the livable, walkable neighborhood that we desire.
Thank you, Member Martinez. Others with comments? Member Donahue?
Yes, I support you, you and Ally, further negotiating, and I think that, I also just want to say I appreciate the, making the bike lanes really protected with a curb will solve a lot of the problems we're having in town about pickup, delivery, and will really make that site more usable for pedestrians and cyclists. So I appreciate that gesture they're making.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Others who wish to speak? I'll just have one more, one more comment for the benefit of what Member Welch said. We do own several properties adjacent to this site, and so while I agree with you completely that whenever we abandon an opportunity to have something constructed as part of an existing planned development, cities, it's generally a very prudent policy, what you've stated, to make sure that we don't abandon an opportunity to use land when it's available to us. We happen to own land right on the backside of this market, and so the opportunity to perhaps expedite housing on those sites and do more with it even, I'm looking at that as a consideration, too. So I just want to share with you that I agree with what you're saying. I think you nailed it on the head, and I didn't fully articulate all the things going through my mind in the moment, but I share the same concerns you have, generally. Others? Do we have any further comment on the design that people wish to share? I've heard comments about parking and questions about parking. I would just share that I think that the, I find the massing of the middle building curious, in the sense that there's an opportunity to further enhance the view corridor by simply massing the building in the same height structure as the neighboring building to the north of it. And I think that the developer and the architect should give further consideration to comments they received in letters from neighboring property owners about whether that would be accommodated, and that the original PDP has a one-hundred-and-seventy-five-foot tower, so second building at under ninety feet, to me, would not be inconsistent with the PDP. That's just one council member's perspective. Okay, it looks like Member Donahue agrees with me. So, anyone else? No? Okay. Staff, is there anything further that you'd like to get as guidance or direction from the city council? The applicant, while I have you here, is there anything that you would like to ask us that you did not receive feedback on? you did not receive feedback on?
No, I think you've done a good job of analyzing the situation and we're happy to sit down as soon as possible and meet with both you and the vice mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so and just to be clear so that there's no ambiguity later, does the council agree with the direction I've recommended so that through staff know that there's support for that? Yes, okay, so there's unanimous support for that direction and we will bring a recommendation back as it is the full council's decision whether anything would be accepted in this matter. Okay, so with that, that concludes item six point one and that moves us to item seven. Sherry, the time is seven oh five PM. This meeting is adjourned. For the members of the public who are here, the brief meetings with the Mesa Board and the redevelopment agency will commence at seven fourteen PM and we will have the city council meeting shortly thereafter. See you in a few minutes.
Services Authority's Special Meeting. I've already gone over the AB 361 instructions related to teleconference for this evening. And please note that all members are still present. At this time, I'll take a motion to approve the final agenda.
So moved. I'll second.
Motion by Member Martinez, seconded by Vice Mayor Medina to approve this agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers?
Aye. Item four is ex parte communications. Are there any to report? Seeing none. Item five is public comment for agenda items that are not on this agenda. Members of the public who wish to comment for an item not on the agenda of the Mesa Board will get one minute. Please recognize Brian Donahue for one minute. Good evening. Go ahead.
Good. I misspoke last time. I thought that Christie Park increase by marketplace development was point two acres. In fact, it was point four six acres. But it was still way, way less than what Mr. Stephan, the developer, told you, which is doubling. So, Christie, but I looked it up in the break. I found out that Christie Avenue Park should have been expanded by a minimum of 3.6 acres to properly offset the new residents the Marketplace project would bring. An additional one acre would be needed for all the offset, all the new workers in the retail and office spaces generated by the project according to the general plan. And combining the two, the total amount of park acres to offset the project would need to be about four and a half acres instead of point four six acres, which he delivered. So I think I want to have you guys, you know, I want to have the staff. When a developer comes up and lies to like Mr. Stephan just did, I want to give a
Thank you for your time. That's the end of public comment. Any other members of the public wish to comment on this agenda? Seeing none, they'll move to our agenda item for the evening, which is item six, the resolution of the Board of Directors of the Management of Emeryville Services Authority, amending the 2022 regular meeting calendar for Mesa to add a regular meeting in the month of May. Is there any public comment on the action item for this evening? Seeing none, public comment being closed. Members, is there any comment or discussion? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I move the action item.
I'll second.
Motion by Member Donahue, seconded by Member Marti-- I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Medina to approve the resolution. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers?
Aye, thank you. The action item has been approved. The time is 7:17, Sherry, and we are adjourned from this meeting. Members, the time is 7:17 PM. Today is Tuesday, April 19th, 2022. I'm calling to order this meeting of the City of Emeryville, serving as the successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. Please note this meeting is being conducted pursuant to provisions provided for in Assembly Bill 361, as enumerated in the prior meetings. And please note that all members are still present. This time, I'll take a motion to approve the final agenda for this meeting.
I'll move.
Second.
Mo-- mo-- ah. Motion by Vice Mayor Medina, seconded by Member Donahue to approve this agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Do-- Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers?
Aye. Ex parte communications, any to report? Seeing none. Public comment for consent agenda and items not on the agenda. Members of the public who wish to comment for items not on this agenda will have one minute to do so. Please recognize Brian Donahue.
Finishing up my, finishing up my comment. What I want is when a developer comes and lies to the, to the council, when they've got a project on the table, I want you to direct the staff to, to tell you when they are aware of an outright lie being made, like Mr. Stephan made tonight. This is so that you can be better informed. So when you go about making decisions, we can't let lies by developers pollute and be a toxic source in our decision-making in Emeryville. So if the staff hears a lie, they should tell you, oh, we have a correction to make. That was not true, that what the applicant just said. I, I think you should ask the staff to start volunteering that so we can get better decisions out of the five of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other members of the public who wish to comment on the Redevelopment Agency? Seeing none, public comment is now closed, and I'll turn to the consent calendar. Members, we have three items on the consent agenda for the Redevelopment Agency. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Like to move consent?
I second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Medina, seconded by Member Donahue to approve the consent calendar items. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers?
Aye. The consent calendar has been approved. There are no action items. The time is 7:20 PM. This meeting is now adjourned. Okay. The time is 7:20 PM. I'd like to call to order the City Council of the City of Emeryville's regularly scheduled meeting. This meeting is being conducted pursuant to the provisions of Assembly Bill 361, which has been noted and detailed prior to this meeting and the earlier meetings of the day. Members of the public can make public comment by using the raise hand feature on Zoom or pressing star nine and joining us by phone. If you wish to submit an electronic comment card, you can do so by going to the city's website and going to the council agendas and clicking submit online speaker card here, and the clerk will read your comment card at the appropriate time for the agenda item you wish to speak on. Please note that all members are still present. For approval of the final agenda this evening, members, I would like to ask that we amend the agenda briefly to allow item 12.1, which is the Parks and Rec Committee Annual Report, to be heard upon the conclusion of the consent calendar. So move that ahead for the benefit of the residents participating from the committee. Is there any opposition to my recommendation? Okay, I will make a motion to approve the, approve the agenda with the amendment to take item 12.1 after the completion of section 10 of the agenda.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mayor Bowers, seconded by Member Welch to approve the agenda as amended. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers?
Aye. The agenda has now been approved. Item four are the special orders of the day, and we do have one today. So bear with me while I pull this up. So the week of April 24th through April 30th is National Victims' Rights Week. And I believe, Sherry, we do have a representative from the Alameda County District Attorney's Office here, Maria, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, welcome, Maria. And--
Yes.
Thanks for being here this evening. So I'm going to, it's a little awkward to do these virtually, but I'm going to read this proclamation and give you an opportunity to speak. So whereas more than 26 million people became victims of, become victims of crime each year, which also affects their family, friends, neighbors, and coworkers, and the Alameda County Victim Witness Division is dedicated to ensuring the rights of crime victims and their families by providing services to aid in their recovery from the emotional, psychological, social, and economic impact of crime as they reclaim their sense of safety, well-being, and dignity, and does so without regard to a person's race, gender, religion, nationality, sexual orientation, and gender identity or immigration status. And whereas victims are faced with many challenges as a result of crime, and often enter systems that fail to meet their needs, provide appropriate services, or treat them with the dignity and respect they deserve, and involving survivors helps victims, services providers, and criminal justice professionals understand the culture, values, and expectations of underserved and unserved victims who seek assistance and justice. And whereas the Alameda County District Attorney's Office Victim Witness Assistance Program, established in 1974, was the first program in the United States and started with only one victim advocate, but today, the Alameda County DA's office employs more than 60 individuals dedicated to working with victims of crime. And whereas in 1984, the Crime Victims Fund was established by the Victim of Crime Act to provide a permanent source of support for crime victim services and compensation, and the Victim Witness Assistance Division partners with survivors, community service providers, criminal justice professionals, and victim advocates who are working together to enhance a criminal justice system response that is accessible, culturally competent, and appropriate for all victims of crime. And whereas in 2021, the Victim Assistance, Victim Witness Assistance Division provided over 732 services to more than 143 crime victims in Emeryville, including but not limited to child victims of violence and sexual abuse, and survivors of stalking, homicide, human trafficking, crimes against elders and dependent adults, sexual assault, domestic violence, robbery, and other crimes. For victims of crime without independent financial means, the District Attorney's Office facilitated financial support through the Victim Compensation Program. And whereas the Alameda County DA's office has been a leader in outreach and services to underserved populations, including those affected by commercial sexual exploitation of children, sexual assault victims from cold-hit DNA cases, immigrant victims, urban youth, and victims in the LGBTQ community, as well as the disabled victims, such as those who are deaf or hard of hearing, and has been bridging the gap between law enforcement and the community and building the community's trust in the criminal justice system. And whereas National Crime Victim Rights Week provides an opportunity to celebrate the energy, creativity, and commitment that launched the Victims' Rights Movement, inspired its progress, and continues to advance the causes of justice for victims. Now, therefore be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Emeryville hereby proclaims the week of April 24th through 30th as National Victims' Rights Week in the City of Emeryville, reaffirming the commitment to enforcing victims' rights during Victims' Rights Week and throughout the year, and an appreciation for those victims and survivors of crime who have turned personal tragedy into a motivating force to improve the response to victims of crime and building a more just community. Proclaim this 19th day of April 2022 by the Mayor of Emeryville. And before I turn it over to Maria to let her make some brief remarks, I will just add my, in addition to this proclamation and my appreciation to the victims' advocates who do peer counseling and crisis services and other types of holistic and trauma-informed care for people across Alameda County. I work, as I know my colleagues and many people who are here probably know, in this space, I am the State Policy Director for Crime Survivors for Safety and Justice and the Alliance for Safety and Justice, and I will be leaving tomorrow to go host our first Healing Vigil, Vigil and Survivor Speak event in Phoenix. It's the first time we'll be having one in Arizona, and I'll spend all of Crime Survivors Week pretty much working on issues that elevate the voices of survivors of crime to ensure that we center policy decisions around the people who are most impacted by it. I can just tell you from working in trauma-informed space for many years now that the people who do this work are completely selfless people. It is extremely difficult work to do, to work with people who have experienced trauma and crime in their life, who have lost loved ones, who have had their dignity, their, their set safety of their own person, whether that is physically or sexually violated by another person. It is very hard to be in a space of support and not feel a degree of harm yourself. So it takes a very courageous person to do this work, and I want to thank all the people who do that, and I want to give Maria the opportunity to say some things herself. And you're on mute, Maria.
Thank you, Mayor Bowers, and also thank you to the councils in regards to, I appreciate the acknowledgement that it is very courageous work and it is trauma-informed. So on behalf of the District Attorney's Office, and specifically on behalf of Nancy O'Malley, we appreciate the proclamation. And next week, as you mentioned, Mayor, we're celebrating Victims' Rights Week in an attempt to give outreach to the community, raise awareness about what our services are, and really just try and get out into the community and help as much as we can. We have been stymied by the COVID pandemic, but we have remained open the entire time, and we're always here and available to help any crime victims. So I appreciate you taking the time to read the proclamation, and we graciously accept it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will just note, there are 39 trauma recovery centers in the United States, and one of them is here in Alameda County at the Family Justice Center. So we are, we are blessed with some additional resources that many people in underserved and unserved communities in the United States do not have. And I recommend that any person who is watching this or is close to a person who has been a victim of a crime, who wishes to receive services for ongoing care or unmet needs, contact the either Family Services Unit, or Victim Services Unit, or the Trauma Recovery Center of Alameda County for more help and information. Do any members wish to add anything to tonight's special proclamation statements, if anyone? No. Okay. Thank you very much for coming, Maria, and that is our special, special order of the day. Okay. Number five on our agenda is announcements of commission and committee vacancies. Madam Clerk?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. We have just opened, aside from the unexpected vacancies that we've been trying to fill, we have just opened our annual recruitment for our various standing committees, and those applications are due by June 5th, and council will make the appointments on June 21st. And there are, it's on our website, and we news flashed and tweeted and Facebooked this information out to the community.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Item six is council member's special announcements or reports on meetings that you have attended. I'll start with Member Welch. Do you have any reports from meetings that you've attended recently for the city?
No, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Member Martinez?
No, thank you.
Okay. Member Donahue? Vice Mayor Medina? No? Okay, we have a night with no report backs. That's okay. Number seven, city manager's report. Madam City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to take a moment to thank the council members who were able to attend the Spring Expo this past weekend. Also, I would like to publicly apologize for not mentioning this in this forum, especially to you, Mr. Mayor, and letting the public know about this. We did put this on our newsflash. So we were very fortunate to have about 700 members of the community who were able to participate, and specifically would like to take, thank Pedro Jimenez and the community services staff for arranging one of our first big public events since shutdown, and I think the community was very happy to get out there and enjoy each other. So we had a great day. Lots of folks signed up for our programs for the summer, so of course, we encourage people to continue signing up for those programs, and we look forward to having further events as we go forward. So thank you all again for participating.
Thank you. I want to just add on to that. I want to give a special thank you to Pedro and the Community Services Team, and in particular, while, I'm sure there are many other people I could name, I want to thank Kim Burrows, and I want to thank Rebecca. I had the privilege of walking around the gymnasium and meeting with the various booth members, and all of them actually gave a lot of praise to Rebecca for putting on a fantastic event. She is a bright shiny spot in the city, and I just want to pass my appreciation through the city manager and Pedro to her, for her work. And yes, I ran into Member Martinez there, and, and her kids having a good time, and there was a select, very privileged group of people who were able to get a fruit smoothie made by the mayor on a bicycle. I was able to make some fruit smoothies by pedaling fast on a bike that was far too small for me, that was very clownish looking, but I had a good time, and I, there was many kids who found quite a number of Easter eggs. I feel like we should have obstacles on the football field. It looks a little too easy for my taste, but these will be in the notes for next year's Spring Expo. Thank you. Item eight is ex parte communications. Members, please take a moment to review the agenda, and I will ask if each of you have any ex parte communications that you wish to report, and I'll start with the Vice Mayor and ask if you have any to report.
No, I don't.
Okay. Member Donahue, do you have anything to report this evening? No. Member Martinez? No. Member Welch? No? Okay. I have to report on item 11.2 that I have had emailed discussions with members of the American Front Services Committee related to item 11.2. Okay. That will move us to public comment for the consent agenda and items not on the agenda. Members of the public who wish to comment for an item not on tonight's agenda will be afforded two minutes to do so. We will take public comment for the items that are on the agenda later, so if you are here for a specific agenda item, we will take your comment at that time. We have a couple hands up. Let's begin with Jennifer Two, please. Good evening and welcome.
Hi, thank you. I wanted to speak on AB 481. Is this the right part?
No, when I get to item 11.2, I'll call for public comment on that item.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. So we can lower her hand, and we will go to Brian Donahue, please. Two minutes for comment. Good evening.
Great. After the, the city, the attorney hired by the city, Ms. Crowell's decision or judgment that the California Vehicle Code provides that cities may make it illegal to park for vehicles block bike lanes, after that decision was handed down this week, or last week, I guess it was, I, I sense that Emeryville's on the cusp of doing that and making it illegal to block bike lanes like other cities have done. So in, insofar that that happens, I say congratulations to us for finally joining the, you know, 21st century. But warning, this department does not like bicycling. They don't care about it, and they don't want to, I mean, the chief deferred to against public safety. That shows the level of dislike of bicycling. He could have, he could have ruled it illegal, but he deferred to goods and services moving around efficiently rather than public safety. So the warning is, he's not going to, if you guys make it illegal to block bike lanes, he's not going to honor that, and he's not going to do his end of the bargain, which would be to issue citations for vehicles blocking bike lanes. So warning, the next battle is going to be that, trying to get the chief to honor our wishes to have it, vehicles not block bike lanes. This is the, this is what's coming, and I'm giving you a heads up, and it's going to get ugly. I can tell. Like I said, the level of depravity from the police department is just huge on that issue. But thank you very much.
Any other members of the public who wish to comment for the consent agenda or items not on tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none, public comment is now closed. We'll turn to the consent calendar. Members, there are items 10.1 through 10.8 on your agenda. Is there anybody who wishes to pull an item or discuss it further before we take a vote? Seeing none, is there a motion for the agenda, the consent calendar?
I'll move consent.
I second.
A motion has been made by Vice Mayor Medina and seconded by Member Donahue to approve the consent calendar. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers?
Aye, thank you. The consent calendar has been approved. Item 12.1 is the Parks and Recreation Committee's Annual Report on Committee Goals, Principles, and Accomplishments for Calendar Year 2021 and its Proposed Committee Priorities for Calendar Year 2022. And Pedro and Alejandro, I think, are going to provide us our community update. Thank you and welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Yeah, Chair Alejandro Anasal should be on to give the presentation.
Yes, I am here.
All right, great.
Good evening. Go ahead.
Okay, um, so my name is Alejandro Anasal. I'm from the Chairman of the Parks and Recreation Committee. I am seeing this presentation, and I wasn't aware we had a PowerPoint that we were walking through. But, okay.
I can take it down if you don't want to--
If you'd like to give your update without it, we can do that. That's okay.
Can we remove the PowerPoint, please? I wasn't, yes, thank you. Okay, so my name is Alejandro. I'm here from the Parks Committee meeting. There attached to the agenda, there is a list of our, our report for the past year. We have, I'm going to start by highlighting some of the things we've accomplished in the past year. So in 2021, we continued to review design concepts or potential village green projects in the city, and recommended to consider Stanford Park and Bodre Street closure under the Village Greens project. Additionally, as the committee, we received presentations from developers, and we reviewed proposals for new open spaces, specifically at the proposed site at the intersection of Lacoste and 65th Street near Ashby Avenue, where a developer is proposing a new complex, and there will be a park included in that. As the committee, we discussed capital improvement projects in the city and how to, which park projects to prioritize, and how the capital improvement program prioritizes park creation. We discussed beach improvements at Shorebird Park, and started a conversation towards the end of the year on possible uses of East Shore Park, specifically the select, the section east of the Firehouse. And for us as the committee, we noticed that that's kind of an underutilized, but very beautiful space in the city, that there are different uses that are allowed and zoned for that area that we intend to continue to explore in the coming year. And also towards the end of the year, we began discussing an idea that's pretty exciting to me and many of the committee members, which is the idea of rooftop parks, specifically on parking garages. We've noticed, and I've looked probably many others, that there are many empty parking garages in our city, and the rooftop space provides, honestly, there's very great views from the top of some of our parking garages, and there's an opportunity there for new public space for the city. We provided inputs on city maps and park facilities, and then also towards the end of the year, recommended to the city to consider nature play areas in our parks. In the coming year, we're going to continue with some of the projects I described, specifically advocating for the expansion of park spaces in Emeryville to increase the ratio of parks to residents, and then explore funding mechanisms for some of the ideas we discussed and potential improvements to parks as the city continues to grow. We, yeah, additionally, so in the next year, we're going to continue to, we recognize the importance of working with the plans that we already have in place as a city and improving the plans for the future. So in the coming year, we will prioritize and aggregate for CIP projects that improve and maintain existing parks. Additionally, we're going to continue to evaluate and update the Parks and Recreation Strategic Plan, which was finalized in 2011, and need some updating as the city continues to grow. Thanks. I was practicing speaking very fast. This is a new, a new medium for me to communicate. Thanks for letting me speak today, and I'm excited to continue listening to your meeting.
Thank you for being here, Alejandro. We appreciate that very informative and appropriately timed report. And what I'd like to do before we invite member discussion or questions is to hear from the public. Members of the public who wish to comment on the Park Committee's report on accomplishments, goals, and plans for the coming year will be afforded two minutes to do so. Madam Clerk, would you please recognize Brian Donahue for two minutes?
Yeah, I'd like to have it be known that several years ago, at least two, three years ago, I appeared before the Parks and Rec Committee just as a speaker to let them know about the general plan's park provisions, and the, and the most salient thing in the general plan, which is the, the new development needs to have, be, become, become with parks at a rate of three acres per thousand new residents. I made that presentation to the committee, and none of them had heard of it. Then a couple years went by, and there's new members on the committee. I went to the committee again and told them the same thing, and none of the new members were aware of this. This is the most salient thing about the, the general plan's park, park provisions, the three acres per thousand residents. So it's not an accident that the committee doesn't know this. This is by design by the staff, specifically, in this case, now Pedro, who you were just praising a moment ago. But remember, Pedro is not doing his due diligence. He's not letting the committee members know about the most important thing they need to know about with regard to parks in the general plan. And I say that's not an accident. I say that Pedro and others on the staff don't want the committee to know that because it's a point of embarrassment for the City of Emeryville, because we are so parks poor, and there's no formula to make us, to get us to the, the place we have to be according to the general plan. And so the best thing to do is stick your head in the sand, so says Pedro and others on the staff. So I don't, I don't think you should be praising Pedro. I think you should be chastising and telling him to let the committee know what their charge is and what, what we're up against. Ignorance is not bliss in this case. The ignorance means no new parks. So, you know, could you please do your due diligence and let the staff know, to start, to let the committee members know, on this and other committees, what their charge is vis-à-vis our general plan? That would be greatly appreciated.
That's your time.
Okay, thank you. Are there other members of the public who wish to comment? Okay, I've, normally I give it to the liaison, but I just want to say, Pedro, I think you're a fantastic employee. I want to just appreciate all the work you do with community services, the committees that we have you staffing, and all the other roles you fill in for. So as one member of the City Council who sees all you do for the city, I don't want you to be the least bit concerned that we're concerned that you're not informing the public because I'm very familiar with what you do do with the city on a daily basis. Having said that, I would like to turn it over to Member Donahue, who is the liaison to this committee, and invite him to go first.
I, I think this committee is a thoughtful, creative committee who are looking at our city with fresh eyes all the time, and I'm pleased to be the liaison for this committee
And I'm pleased to be the liaison for this Committee because I think, uh, if we somehow can get a park bond in the future where we can actually buy more land, we will know what to do with it, we'll have options, is what I think, even if the options are not apparent right now. So I, I just wanna, uh, thank these Committee members for exploring and thinking. And, uh, while I think that it would be ideal to have more park space, it is difficult to achieve in today's world where housing is so short for almost every California community. And I think that the state of California is emphasizing getting people housed first. Parks come in second, but we can't forget about parks. And I think that going forward, we will figure out a way to get more park space and more open space that we can use. Uh, and, uh, I, I just am thankful that our Committee members continue to serve.
Thank you, Member Donahue, do other members wish to comment about Vice Mayor Medina?
I just wanna thank the Parks Committee for that presentation and say that I was, uh, very, very entertained to hear the recommendation for Bodre Street, which I believe is exactly the same recommendation the Transportation Committee made just a few days ago. Uh, so love, uh, love how everyone is envisioning the Village Greens, um, projects spreading and connecting more parks across Emeryville. Thank you for all your work.
Yeah, the Vice Mayor, Alejandro, Vice Mayor said what I was gonna say, which is, this, when you said that, both her and I, uh, perked up because we made some recommendations for some grant study money that the Council will hear about in the coming meeting, uh, related to that location on a transportation and open space idea. Um, so we're happy to hear that you're excited about that and we look forward to getting a lot of, um, really good input from the Parks Committee if we get some money for that. Um, there were some other things I heard as well that really, uh, uh, got me on the edge of my seat, but I'm going to, uh, contain my excitement for the time being. Others wish to comment? I just wanna once again, on behalf of the City Council, thank all the members of the Parks and Recreation Committee and Alejandro for coming out this evening, Pedro and the others on our staff for working with this Committee. I think Member Donahue said it best, that there's a lot of really exciting and great things that, um, can, can come from the work that the Parks Committee is doing, and I agree that when we build more housing in a dense urban core or more livability should come with it, and that includes, um, highly well-programmed, uh, uh, off, I almost said office space, open space. Um, Mr. Bryant, did you wish to add something?
Oh, I'm sorry, no, I was just getting ready for the next item.
Okay, well, that was my cue then, Mr. Bryant is telling me to move along, so we will be done with item twelve point one. So thank you to the staff and the Parks Committee for that, we will return now to our public hearings. And, um, item eleven point one is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville establishing updated development impact fees for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Members, if it does not, uh, if there is no opposition, I would like to waive staff presentation for this item. It is a standard, uh, percentage-based fee increase across all fees unless staff wish to correct me with any exceptions. Uh, seeing none, is there any objection to waiving presentation? No? Okay, Charlie, we spared your presentation time and, uh, I'm gonna get back on schedule, no problem. This is a public hearing, the time, Madam Clerk, is seven forty-eight P M. and I am opening the public hearing. The public hearing being opened, members of the public who wish to comment on the proposed fee amendment for the next calendar year will be afforded two minutes to do so. If you can hear you, anyone wish to speak at the public hearing, seeing none? The time is seven forty-eight, Madam Clerk, and I have closed the public hearing. The public hearing being closed, is there any discussion related to the fee schedule? Seeing none, is there a motion by any member to adopt the fee schedule?
So moved.
Second.
A motion has been made by Member Martinez and seconded by Member Donahue to approve the resolution establishing the updated fee schedule for twenty-two, twenty-three, please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouders?
Aye, thank you, and thank you for that brilliant presentation, Charlie. And that will conclude item eleven point one. Um, item eleven point two is an introduction and waiver of first reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Emeryville adopting Emeryville Police Department Policy seven oh seven related to military equipment. This presentation, I believe, will be jointly provided by Captain Oliver Collins and Christie Crowell, Assistant City Attorney, correct?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
I believe Ms. Crowell will be starting.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers, um, I am here with Captain Collins and I'm gonna give the beginning of this presentation, turn it over to him, and then it will return to me at the end. Um, so, uh, Sherry, could you, next slide, please? Um, just a bit of background on AB four eighty-one, it was adopted in the fall of last year and the purpose, uh, of AB four eighty-one is to promote a transparent and public process uh, and get meaningful public input on the funding, acquisition, and use of military equipment by law enforcement agencies. Um, it requires law enforcement agencies to adopt an ordinance by way of its legislative body containing, um, a military equipment use policy prior to doing any of those actions, funding, acquiring, or using military equipment, and before collaborating with other agencies that use military equipment. Uh, Government Code Section seven, seventy seventy, uh, identifies sixteen categories of, uh, military equipment. The first fifteen specifically identify certain types of equipment and the last one is sort of a, uh, catch-all, uh, section. And, um, the bill indicates that even if the city does not possess any military equipment, the city still has to adopt, uh, the ordinance, uh, containing the policy, um, if it collaborates with other jurisdictions that have military equipment and Emeryville is such a city. So here's just an overview of, um, the general policy requirements, the requirements that have to be in, in the policy. And I would note that it is, uh, a bit unusual, the legislator decided to, um, require the city to adopt a policy by way of an ordinance, but that is what they have asked us to do. Um, so the ordinance for you actually adopts a policy, which is something we, we would normally just adopt by resolution. But, um, the law requires us to adopt an ordinance and policy within that ordinance, it, uh, has to contain, uh, these seven items. Um, and it, it would, the policy would need to list any type, any, uh, of the military equipment that the city has, the quantity it is seeking, the capabilities of that kind of equipment, um, and the purpose and authorized uses for the equipment and, um, that kind of thing. You guys can all read the, uh, seven policy requirements that are required by the law. Um, these requirements are generally intended to promote transparency in terms of acquiring or funding military equipment. Um, just a few kind of remainder requirements to fill you in on. Uh, the law requires the city to begin the ordinance adoption process by May first, twenty twenty-two. Um, that's why it's on your agenda for this evening, it doesn't require full adoption and/or effective date of the ordinance to be before May, it just requires us to begin the adoption process. Um, the law also requires, uh, the law enforcement agency to provide you with an annual report and to hold a public hearing when it provides you with that report. Um, and to comply with the law's notice and hearing requirements if, if any military equipment is to be purchased. So, um, with that, I, I think I'm gonna turn it to, to Captain Collins, if he's available, and he can discuss, um, the fact that the city has, uh, a minimum amount of, um, uh, military equipment that it recently, um, relinquished, uh, to, um, a third party, and Captain Collins is gonna go over that now.
All right, Captain Collins. Uh, thank you, and thank you, Christie, for that, uh, intro. So as the slide shows, we, uh, the Police Department had two forty-millimeter launchers, which were primarily used, um, well, not really used, uh, our records show that, uh, these items were manufactured and purchased sometime in the nineties. And in my, uh, time at the Police Department, they've never been used. And, uh, it's actually kind of a good thing for us to sort of, uh, go through our equipment locker and, um, you know, dispose of this type of stuff that's been around for quite some time and, and not being used. So those, uh, two items and the associated, uh, munitions that go along with them were, uh, all surrendered and are no longer in the possession of the Police Department. There is, um, uh, legal paperwork or firearms paperwork that's in the process of being completed, but, uh, apparently there's some slowdowns or some delays in some of that equipment, uh, for the, for the actual, um, firearms paperwork to get processed. Next slide, please. So, uh, in January, we, uh, adopted a policy outlining this stuff in draft form from our, uh, policy vendor, which is Lexipol. And, uh, they sent out the, uh, policy draft that, um, was believed to be, to have all the requirements needed by the Assembly Bill. Um, we have since reviewed that policy and it is, uh, here for your review today, I believe. Yeah, next slide. All right, um, a couple of sections here in the policy, uh, that we're requesting a little bit of clarification and modification to, uh, mainly for transparency and so that we can, um, make sure that, uh, people understand that the Police Department does not possess any equipment that qualifies as military equipment. However, um, if for some reason there is an incident that we require mutual aid from, uh, neighboring jurisdictions, that, um, we have this in place, uh, in case some of those agencies perhaps bring that equipment along, along with them. The important point to note in this is that if another jurisdiction brings, uh, identified equipment into our city, our staff will not be using it. Um, we have pretty strict guidelines on prior training and familiarization with any equipment that our, our staff would be using. So, uh, the people, if there was an incident where we required mutual aid and that, uh, mutual aid agency brought a piece of equipment with them, it would not be, uh, for our staff's use. Uh, next slide, please. All right, I think that's it, um, and I think Christie's gonna take it back over from here.
Yeah, thanks, Captain Collins, um, there were, these two changes on this last slide, uh, Mayor and City Council are, um, uh, recommended, uh, for your adoption this evening or for when you introduce the, um, ordinance. Uh, there were just two minor non-substantive changes that clarify Lexipol's policy. Um, as Captain Collins indicated, uh, E P D has reviewed Lexipol's policy, the City Attorney's Office has reviewed it, and we believe it's in compliance with AB four eighty-one, but we felt that these two, with these two changes, the policy would be clarified, um, because the city does not possess any qualifying equipment. Um, Section seven oh seven point four is recommended, uh, to be changed so that there's no kind of, uh, hanging non-attachment, uh, there. If you look at the draft policy, it, it, it indicates that you should insert an attachment, um, uh, naming all of the military equipment, but we don't have any, so, uh, we recommend including this new sentence, um, instead. And on Section seven oh seven point six, um, we thought it would be better to refer to the actual, um, Government Code Sections that make up AB four eighty-one instead of just this internal policy. So we thought those were clarifying, uh, uh, amendments and, um, we recommend that you adopt, um, or introduce the ordinance with these changes this evening. And, uh, Captain Collins and I can be available for later questions if you need.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just also emphasize a prior slides point, which is that what's before you tonight is first reading and, uh, we would not be returning with the second reading of this ordinance until the relinquishment of the equipment that Captain Collins mentioned is completed.
Thank you for that clarification. I have one question for the City Attorney, it's listed, the title of this item on the agenda is listed as, uh, introduction and waiver of first reading, do you essentially just mean a read by title only?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you for that, okay. Uh, members, do you have clarifying questions before we take public comment about the proposed policies? Okay, now is the time for public comment, members of the public who wish to speak on this item will be given three minutes to do so for this item. Three minutes, please, uh, actually, let me begin, this is a public hearing because it is an ordinance. So, Madam Clerk, I am opening the public hearing, the time is seven fifty-nine, the public hearing being opened. Members of the public who wish to speak at this public hearing will have three minutes to do so. I would like to first recognize Jennifer Two. Good evening, Jennifer.
Hi, thank you, um, this is Jennifer Two with the American Front Service Committee. And, uh, first, I really want to encourage the City Council to revise the proposed policy on mutual aid. Uh, Justice, both the, and the County Board of Supervisors, uh, looked at, as from the Sheriff's Office, and that proposed policy. It's not, uh, eight, uh, eighty-eight.
Jennifer, Jennifer, uh, you have a very bad connection, we can't hear you, do you, um, do you have, uh, maybe you're in a place where you can improve your signal?
Let me try calling in by phone, um, and I will rejoin the queue.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that, so we'll, the no prejudice to her time, please, I'll give her her three minutes when she returns. Um, we'll recognize in the interim period Alejandro Anasal, please.
Hello, um, this is Alejandro, um, I'm a member of the Emeryville community and I just spoke on, about the Parks and Recreation Committee. Um, this is my first, um, City Council meeting and I just wanted to, um, register my, my, quite, I mean, very surprised to learn that the City of Emeryville, if I understood the slide correctly, purchases its police policies from a private company. Um, and I just wanted to re, state for the record how shocked I am to learn that.
Okay, thank you for your public comment, uh, the next speaker will be Brian Donahue.
Okay, I would like to yield my three minutes to Mr. John Lindsey Poland, and my wife would like to, um, to, uh...
Mr. Donahue, I'm not yielding time, I did not afford that, you have your three minutes, you're on the clock.
Uh, there's a, there's a precedence of, of yielding time.
Donahue, I am the chair, would you like to take your three minutes or would you like to continue to talk, talk about it now?
Okay, well, we're gonna talk about why you've changed this and, without notifying the public, I suppose we'll do that later. Okay, I, I have concerns that, why the rush job on this? How come it's not, we're so behind the eight ball now due to the calendar, though it's an emergency, we've gotta do this right now, without public debate on this. And nothing was mentioned about AR fifteen assault rifles, which are military, uh, rifles, according to the state of California. Now, the state of, uh, the City of Emeryville, the Police Department was able, uh, calls, says that these assault rifles are standard issue. And we are alone in the Bay Area, our, our Police Department is alone, the only department that calls AR fifteen assault, military assault rifle standard issue, and because of that designation, that, these rifles did not appear in the list of military equipment as per the guidelines of AB four, uh, six, four eighty-one. Okay, so I'm, I'm crying foul here with that. And then further, why do, why do we wanna, uh, have, uh, assault rifles, military assault rifles be our standard issue? Why, why are we doing that? We need to have a more debate about this, a public debate, I've been asking for this for years and I've gotten, you know, nowhere with the, with the Police Department and the Council. It's way beyond time to have a public debate about this and to have this rushed through at the last minute like this, especially with not being able to see time, like we've ha- have been able to do up till tonight, is extremely upsetting. So, uh, you know, you can't just change the laws as you go along, Mr. Mayor, you have to, you have to, uh, you know, this starry decisism, you have to observe the precedents that we've had where speakers have been able to do this. This is what I expected, and this is what I told Mr. Poland, Lindsey Poland, that he would be, have more time because I would get seated to him. So now he has a, something prepared to say to you, and he's not gonna be able to say it in time because of this pulled out of the last minute, pulled out of the hat, uh, idea that in time cannot be exceeded anymore. And I guess that we'll go back to allowing that after this meeting, perhaps, probably, I don't know, I guess it's up to you. But it's, it's sort of dictatorial and authoritarian and it's like power grab. Uh, like I said, longstanding precedent. Like I said, longstanding precedents for being able to see time among speakers at council meetings. Upset here tonight.
Okay, thank you for your comment. The next speaker will be John Lindsey Poland. Good evening.
Can you hear me?
We can, welcome.
Thank you so much. My name is John Lindsey Poland. I work for the American Friends Service Committee. I did work with the author of AB 41 and their office as well as the sponsors. I refer you to an email that I sent to each of you this afternoon for fuller information. Mr. Donahue is correct in saying that EPD is an outlier in the Bay Area in terms of not reporting on assault rifles in its AB 41 military equipment policy. Berkeley, Hayward, Livermore, San Leandro, Fremont, El Cerrito, Union City, Canole, Los Gatos, Morgan Hill, which are similar in size to Emeryville PD, Albany PD, they all created policies for assault rifles. Even Albany PD doesn't have assault rifles, but they created a policy for them in case of a mutual aid deployment. So I really urge you to send this back to the department in order to fix that, particularly after the killing of Yvette Henderson by an EPD officer in 2015 using an AR-15 rifle. It behooves the city of Emeryville to meet, to be more transparent, to go the extra yard in order to be transparent. It's remarkable because assault rifles actually are in the policy manual of Emeryville PD, but there is no information about how much, about how much it costs, about the training required. These are the things that are required in a use policy for AB 41. The other thing that I would strongly urge you to address and send this back to EPD to address is the mutual aid circumstance. Because if the, if the use of this equipment and the provision in AB 41 is not just about acquisition, it's about use within the jurisdiction. So if Alameda County Sheriff's Office or Oakland PD come into Emeryville and use equipment that's classified as military under this legislation, then it applies to them. And if there's no policy that Emeryville has created, then those agencies will be using their own policies. And if you saw what the Alameda County Sheriff's Office did when they evicted moms for housing in early 2020 in West Oakland, they brought in all kinds of military gear just to evict moms, black moms, from housing that they were non-violently occupying. So there's many other things to say, there's, but I want to repeat that Emeryville PD is an outlier I know of no other police department in the Bay Area. They almost all have assault rifles and yet none of them have said, oh no, this doesn't classify as military equipment. If you give me a little bit more time, a special dispensation, I would share more information with you because I have been working on this issue for quite some time. But I understand that the three minutes are up.
Thank you very much for your comment. The next speaker will be the phone number ending in 6511, which I imagine may be Jennifer Jennifer, are you there? Can you hit unmute?
Hi.
Hi, welcome.
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Still a little shaky, but we'll try. Go ahead.
All right, thanks so much for your help, Mr. Mayor. This is Jennifer Two with the American Friends Service Committee, and I want to encourage the City Council to revise the proposed policy on mutual aid. There is a separate new law, AB 48, which prohibits kinetic energy projectiles or chemical agents to disperse any assembly protest or demonstration. And Alameda County Sheriff's proposed policy does not comply with AB 48. And so if Alameda County Sheriff's Office were to use its proposed policy today in Emeryville, that means that Emeryville would be ceding its authority to fully comply with all California law within its jurisdiction. And so I strongly encourage the council to, to take some time to consider it. I also want to note that AB 481 requires that the proposed policy be posted on the agency's website for 30 days before a public hearing is held. The law also allows for 180 days for revisions after a proposed policy is delivered to the governing body. So I just want to really encourage the council to give the Emeryville public that full 30 days of posting on the police department's website. And also to take advantage of that full 180 days to fully explore the remaining questions that have been raised around the mutual aid part and also around the AR-15. I want to second what my colleague John Lindsey Poland said about, this is the same weapon that was used by Emeryville Police to kill Yvette Henderson in 2015. And this law and the consideration it calls for is exactly the tool that both the department and the city need to add safeguards against any future similar tragedies. That's it. Just please, please remember you do have 180 days that the law provides as a grace period to, and I hope you will use that and also give the public that full 30 days posting that's, that's given on the, that's posting on the website. And use that, that whole time, including the 180 days, to consider the questions of mutual aid and the AR-15. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, the time is 8:11 PM and the public hearing is now closed. And I'm going to just take a brief moment of privilege before we turn to discussion on this item and clarify for apparently confused members of the public who attend these meetings regularly as to the role of the chair as it relates to public comment. So as, since I have become mayor in December, I have not once allowed any person to yield their time to another person. There are plenty of ways for the public to provide comment. We've received written letters. I received in fact four emails from Mr. Lindsey Poland, so I don't think anybody's been aggrieved in their ability to address any members of the decision-making body. I provided three minutes of public comment time for all speakers, which is more than an adequate amount of time in my opinion to do that. And under New Hampshire versus Chuplinsky in the Supreme Court, speaking to stare decisis made it really clear that it's within the purview of a chair, that so long as they're not curtailing the content of a person's speech, the manner and time in which that is provided for at a public comment is within the purview of the chair, as long as it's facially neutral. So as a person who practiced constitutional law, I don't necessarily welcome people telling me that I am upending some sort of practice that I have not engaged in. I have not single time this year allowed people to yield and it is not your purview to tell other members of the public that you're going to do that because it's not your choice, actually. So become a little more informed before you lecture me on those subjects. So moving now to the discussion at hand, are there members who wish to begin and discuss any of the policy that's in front of us this evening? Member of perhaps the Public Safety Committee, I imagine that you have thoughts on this? Member Donahue.
I, I think we should comport with our surrounding communities and list AR-15s because, you know, that's, they're going to list it in their communities if that's true. So I think we have a look into that. And I appreciate the last speaker talking about having things published 30 days. I like that idea so that the public will have time to look at it. And let's consider all the aspects of mutual aid. I think that's prudent to take our time to review it.
Just to be clear, Madam City Manager, I thought we posted this in January on the website, did we not?
It was posted on the police department's website in January, that's correct.
Okay, so we have done more than 30 days for the members of the public who may be concerned on that point. Okay, so other members who wish to provide comment or feedback? Member Martinez.
Just a couple of questions. So for Christie, what is our timeline to get this done? Are we not under the gun because of AB 481?
Thanks, Member Martinez. No, the, we've begun the adoption process as required by law, so at this point, we've complied with the timing requirement there. We've started our adoption process and like I said, we would not come back for second reading until we've legally relinquished the 40 millimeter launchers. So we do have some time, you know, before that would occur anyway, so I don't know the timing on that offhand and I don't think that Captain Collins does either. As he said, there was, there's some paperwork involved. But as far as compliance with the May 1 deadline, we have complied.
And I do have a follow-up question, but I forgot what it was, so I'm going to toss it over to someone else and I'm going to write it down and please come back to me, Mr. Mayor.
I will absolutely come back to you. Others who wish to provide feedback or comment? No? Okay, Vice Mayor Medina?
I have a question of staff. Have we, have we checked to see if cities like Berkeley and Oakland are listing AR-15s? Which I know we've got, we're publicly listed in our website, but within the specific ordinance.
So if it's okay, it's Oliver Collins, I can answer that one. We have done a survey of Alameda County agencies, Contra Costa, Solano, Marin, and up and down California. And what we've learned is some agencies are listing them and some are not. Solano County, we were told today is not and Contra Costa County is not and some other agencies within those counties are. So I think it's really into the interpretation of the, what is deemed to be a standard issue service weapon, which is the criteria that we're operating on. So that's the extent, it's of course anecdotal at this point, but Mr. Lindsey Poland's comments about all Bay Area agencies are doing except for us is what I found not accurate in my survey.
Member Medina, might I follow up just on one issue?
Yes, go ahead.
I had a follow-up question real quick, though.
Oh, sure.
Okay. I was, do we specifically know about Oakland and Berkeley, which are neighboring cities that we often try to mirror policies with?
Yes, they are reporting it. The agencies specifically called out, San Leandro, Livermore, Hayward, Berkeley are listing them, but as far as the kind of broad brush that all Bay Area agencies are listing it is, I didn't find that to be correct in my survey.
Vice Mayor Medina, I don't believe Oakland's policy's been released yet, so we'd let you know about that when it's released.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Crowell.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted for the council's benefit to, so that you could know the exact section that we're looking at here. New Government Code, Section 770D, subsection 10 specifically accepts standard issue weapons below 50 millimeters and, or below 50 caliber and, and that is the exception that AR-15s fall under. And so cities that are not including them in their policy are using this exact same section as well. And we're comfortable with the interpretation of the text in AB 481 here.
Member Martinez.
So thank you. My previous question was answered. However, now I've got a new one. Our, Oliver or Christie, are we aware of our surrounding communities? Do other communities have AR-15s as standard issues?
So that kind of goes back to the other comments, maybe I wasn't entirely clear about it, but of the agencies in our area that Mr. Lindsey Poland called out that have AR-15s are disclosing them as under AB 41 guidelines. The other agencies that I and my colleagues at Burke have reached out to statewide, it's a mixed batch of some are and some are not, but the ones that Contra Costa, Solano specifically, we were told are not. And several agencies within those counties are and some are not. So it's, like I said, it's a little bit all over the map.
If I could just jump in, Mr. Mayor, I think the clarification that the council member was looking for is whether each agency treats those rifles as standard issue. If department provided standard issue service weapons, and I think we would, as the captain was saying, they have been reaching out to people, I think we could provide that information in a more comprehensive format and written comprehensive format so that the council understood what, what department issues what and how they're disclosing it. So for example, the city of Emeryville's Policy 305 on the police department's website identifies the AR-15 as the department-issued service weapon and that's stated there publicly on the website. And so I think we need to go and take a look at those other agencies and, and mirror that information so that you have it in one place.
Thank you, Madam City Manager. That's exactly the answer I was looking for. Yeah, thank you. I would appreciate that.
Okay, others with comments? I have, I have a couple of comments and questions. So one comment that was raised, which I am very concerned about, is the reference to the Alameda County Sheriff's Office not complying with Assembly Bill 48 related to kinetic projectiles and diversionary devices. And I just want to know, I realize that this was a hearing today, but do we have any way of confirming if that was actually the case, that they have a non-compliant policy that does not line up with state law?
Mr. Mayor, I think we need to reach out to the county administrator and the sheriff and ask that question.
Yeah, so privately, I will say I've had two concerns with this policy. One is the generic policy that, and for context, I understand that when other cities provide mutual aid, which is extremely rare, but for a small city, if it happens, we don't get to hand-select who provides mutual aid. That goes through the county sheriff's department, whether we like that or not. It's not a secret that I'm not a fan of the sheriff's department's policies on a number of items, but when a mutual aid request is made, that's where it goes. And by virtue of doing it that way, one of the challenges you have is that in an urgent situation, there isn't an opportunity to determine who is being sent from that list and match that up against these policies. So as a city that doesn't have these weapons, and I would note that nobody actually said tonight, but I would like to thank the police department for not only disposing of the remaining military-grade weapons, but having reviewed the Livermore, Hayward, San Leandro, Berkeley, even Albany, all these other cities have, they have tanks and Bearcats and giant like launchers and all kinds of stuff. So I'm very, I sleep much better knowing that the city of Emeryville's police department does not cache weapons and the ones that were identified, which it's scary to me that there were some sitting here for 30 years, I'm happy they're being relinquished. That being said, I think that the question about, and the argument about acceding our policymaking authority is really not as, the onus is being placed on the wrong jurisdiction. It's impossible to, in my mind, to figure out how to both request mutual aid through the sheriff's office and then also hold policies that may prevent all these other agencies which have these weapons and are trained to use them, to basically tell them that they potentially couldn't use any of those things here. So to me, part of the missed advocacy opportunity here is actually with the county of Alameda and the Alameda County Sheriff's Office, which is doing the same process in which if they were actually structurally required to have a better policy, would benefit not just Emeryville, but every city. So I just want to really flag that I appreciate advocates doing this work. It's, you know, and best policies should be everywhere, so we're no exception to that. But the real problem sometimes is with the agencies that have all these weapons that are the ones that respond to mutual aid because they're a larger agencies. So I do want to know about whether or not there is a non-compliant policy being proposed related to kinetic weapons. It's not a secret to the council members here, in 2020, after George Floyd was murdered, I expressed my interest in limiting the use of diversionary devices and kinetic weapons because they're designed to be used to extract an injured officer, a victim, or to otherwise pull a person or extract a person from a hostage type of situation. They're not supposed to be used for general dispersment and control, although that has become a more common practice with them. And I, so I do think that the state law around AB 48 is a necessary law and I'm supportive of it. And if we have a department as big as the county that is not complying with that, then we absolutely, to Ms. Two's comment, we need to look at whether or not we need to sharpen the policy to say that you must be in compliance with these other existing state laws in order to be able to provide mutual aid. That's my first comment. To the comment about AR-15s being, you know, being assault weapons and being, needing to be disclosed, I just have to say, since the, one of the people who helped collaborate on this bill is here, I've written bills myself for over a decade, I find this, this legislation was not very well-written. It left a lot of weird, weird duplicitous things. It put some conflicting things in place at the same time. And if the goal was to have assault weapons and assault rifles, whether they're standard issue or not, be disclosed, that could have very easily been set in the statute. that could have very easily been set in the statute. And so I find it unusual that the advocates who worked on this are here telling us, well, you're intended to disclose that when the Section C10 says that if it's a standard-issue weapon, it's not needed to be disclosed. Like, you could have had the author do that. So I find it unusual to come and advocate here for what appears to have been an unsuccessful effort to lobby to include that possibly in the state bill. So it left gray area and it's created confusion because I think Member Martinez's question is on point. What are these other agencies doing it? They're, they're probably reporting it because nobody knows exactly what it is we're supposed to report. And it wasn't a hurried process. This bill became the law on January 1st, and we had till May 1st to develop this policy. The public has asked a question about Lexipol and private policies. So when policymakers make a decision to pass a law and they give us something that says, develop an administrative policy in your city, the goal is to have a standardization across jurisdictions so that we're using similar language and we have similar practices. So Lexipol is a private company that helps draft template policies that match up with what the state law, and those are updated very regularly. And we have the option to amend them as we did tonight, but they're designed to give us something that matches the state law. So I want to put the public commenter who is concerned about private, private policy, that these are policies that are standardly used across cities across the state of California. They're not invented by a private company. They're in response to state law. So I, I do have a couple of questions that I need to be answered. I think Member Martinez has asked one of them, and I've asked another one that was raised by a member of the public. Others who wish to comment? Member Martinez?
I just have an additional question. If, if we're getting more information back from staff on this, I'd love to know what the, just very briefly, what the standard of training is for a standard, standard-issue weapon?
What the prerequisite training is, you mean?
Correct. How many, how many hours, what, you know, very briefly. I just want a base-level understanding of, for those standard-issue weapon, what type of training our folks get.
Are there others who have requests for information? Okay. Mr. Captain Collins?
Yes, I can respond to Councilmember Martinez's question right now, if that's beneficial.
If you wish, go ahead.
All right, so for the firearm, the sidearm, we have a minimum training of twice a year, eight hours, two times a year, and a qualification twice a year for that weapon. For the patrol rifle, the AR-15 rifle, there's a minimum of 16-hour introduction class for that for every user upon, before they can use the rifle. And the rifle is also part of that eight-hour training twice a year and qualification. And that's department-specific. Post standards require post-perishable skill every two years that you qualify with any duty firearm. So we're quite, quite ahead of that and way more, train a lot more than the post standards, and we qualify quite a bit more than the post two-year standards.
Thank you, Captain Collins.
Member Donahue?
I just want Captain Collins to say what the acronym POST really is, and so the public will understand how our city is, we have to train to state standards and just to briefly describe what that means. If you would, Captain Collins.
Thank you. And yeah, I should have done that. So POST stands for the California Police Officer Standards Training. They set all guidelines and training requirements for all law enforcement in the California. In California, and each state has their own version of standards. POST regulatory government bodies that, that handle minimum requirements training for their jurisdictions. But for ours is California, and that's where we get the, the baseline of firearms training that I referenced earlier.
Okay, others with questions or comments? Members, it sounds as if there is not a, not, not a majority of people who wish to take an action on the first reading tonight. Am I correct in hearing that? Or is there someone who would like to make a motion on this item? I'll leave that on the table. No, I'm hearing no action. City staff, the, just to clarify two legal items. One is the process of having this first hearing tonight is sufficient to comply with the May 1st deadline. Is that correct, Ms. Crawl?
That's correct.
Okay. And second, do we need to take an action that would either continue this item or, because it is a public hearing, do we need to either continue this item or can staff simply bring this back at a time within the requisite period of days that complies with the law to satisfy the questions council members had this evening?
Mr. Mayor, I think that the questions that I heard, and I can go over them again, I'm not sure that they would impact the actual text of the policy. I didn't hear any direction from the council on proposed edits to the policy. So the questions that I heard were, does Alameda County Sheriff's policy comply with AB48? Could we have other information on other jurisdictions like Berkeley and Oakland, although I think Captain Collins may have addressed that. And then Member Martinez asked about the training for standard-issue service weapons. So if there are other, the city manager has one more.
If I could just clarify, Ms. Crawl, I think we had an information request from Councilmember Martinez where we would collect information about what our standard-issue, department-authorized standard-issue service rifles in other agencies, and we would bring that information back.
Sure, that's fine. Okay. So we could bring that information back in the staff report for the second reading of this ordinance if you chose to introduce it this evening. Or if you had proposed edits to the policy, we would need to know those so that we could bring it back for a second first reading.
So I'm just one member, but I would propose that if you came back and told us that the Alameda County Sheriff's Office was in fact proposing to use an AB481 policy in violation of AB48, I would not accept the city's proposed policy to simply accept the policy practices of neighboring jurisdictions in compliance with Government Code 7070 and 7071. I would find that to be us essentially violating the law through another agency, and I would not be willing to vote for that. So I can't propose language because I don't have information, but I think that there's probably an intervening information meeting that we need to have where information is provided to us to give staff additional guidance of potential amendments before we can have a first reading. Does that seem like that makes sense to other council members? That's what I'm seeing across the board so far. Yes.
Fine, then why don't we continue this public hearing and come back with that information when we have it available?
Okay, I will make a motion to continue this public meeting, and, I'm sorry, this public hearing to a time indeterminate but in compliance with law such that the staff can provide us with information requisite to the development of this policy further.
Second.
A motion has been made by Mayor Bowers and a second by Member Donahue to give, to follow with instructions and continue this meeting. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Hi.
Councilmember Martinez?
Hi.
Councilmember Welch?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Hi.
And Mayor Bowers?
Hi, thank you very much. That item has been continued to a future continuation of the public hearing upon receipt of additional information from staff. Okay, let me go back to our agenda. Okay, that concludes item 11.2. We've done 12.1. 12.2 is consideration of a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville opposing initiative number 21-0042A1, the Taxpayer Protection and Government Accountability Act. And I am so sorry to my friend Sam Kegel for sitting through such a long meeting for us, but welcome, Sam. I hope you're doing well.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Bowers and council members. No worries at all. I'm doing great. I hope you are too. I'm Sam Kegel. I'm your Regional Public Affairs Manager for the East Bay Division of the League of California Cities. I also have with me tonight my colleague Nick Romo. Nick is our legislative representative specializing in revenue and taxation. Thank you so much for having us here this evening. I want to first take a moment to thank you and your city management for regularly contributing your voices to our organization, whether it's participating on a policy committee, engaging with one of our diversity caucuses, or attending division meetings or conferences. You're truly appreciated. We're so much stronger as an organization with many voices at the table, and you're a part of that, so thank you. And specifically, thank you, Mayor Bowers, for serving this year on our Transportation, Communication, and Public Works Policy Committee. Again, we appreciate your time and service there.
You're welcome.
So I was asked to be here tonight to talk a bit about the Taxpayer Protection and Government Accountability Act, which our League of California Cities Board of Directors has voted to oppose. I'm not here to formally request that you oppose this or pass the resolution, but simply to provide information and share our position. This is a proposed initiative that is currently intended for the November 2022 ballot. The proponent of this initiative is the California Business Roundtable. The initiative would amend the California Constitution. Your detailed staff report explains what the initiative does very well. But to sum it up quickly, it includes provisions to limit voters' authority and input, adopt new and stricter rules for raising taxes and fees, and make it more difficult to impose fines and penalties for violation of state and local laws. It puts billions of local government tax and fee revenues at risk statewide with related core public service impacts. More specifically, some of our top concerns include that this measure would limit voter input by prohibiting local advisory measures, where voters provide direction to politicians on how they want their local tax dollars spent. It also includes a provision that would retroactively cancel measures that were passed by local voters, effectively undermining the rights of voters to decide for themselves what their communities need. The measure also creates new loopholes that make it much more difficult for state and local regulators to issue fines and levies on corporations that violate laws intended to protect our environment, public health and safety, and our neighborhoods. And last, I'll note that it changes legal definitions around the burden of proof for local fees and charges that opens the door for additional lawsuits, bureaucracy, and red tape that could end up costing taxpayers. So again, thank you for having us here tonight. Like I said, I do have my colleague Nick Romo, our legislative representative, who is up to his eyeballs in revenue and taxation issues on a regular basis in Sacramento for you all, here to answer any questions.
Well, thank you for that very succinct and informative report, Sam, and thank you, Nick, for being here. Do members have questions for Sam or Nick? No? So as Sam said at the outset, or Member Donahue does. Go ahead.
Is the Business Roundtable well-funded and are they planning a major campaign around this?
We don't fully know, obviously, that their intentions of the proponents, but we do know through watching the Secretary of State's websites, that they have been fundraising, and we do have information that they're out there collecting signatures. So that's all I know at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Senator, this is Nick Romo. I'll just add that we do know that the Business Roundtable is actively contributing to their campaign fund and is aggressively collecting signatures, hoping to get an update this month as to the strength of their advocacy.
Thank you. And I know that Sam said that they're just here to provide information. I had requested this as an agenda item because I'm not here for this to be information. I'm here for us to oppose this, hopefully. This is really bad for our city for so many reasons, and Sam outlined at a high level a number of them. This was originally on the track to be on the ballot in 2018, and they abandoned that process, and they've brought it back. This would have a retroactive effect also to January 1st of this year, so anything we would do this year would be negated and it would have to go back to the voters again. So just to be mindful, like, this is a real threat to things that we have been discussing in the city. It also is a threat to small cities and our ability to fundraise because there are very few options for us to begin with under the California Constitution to do this. It does include things that other cities, would harm other cities, like you can't amend your charter to include taxation and revenue going forward. So there are a lot of limitations. Yeah, it, it's pretty, pretty restrictive in a way. They just decided they don't want to pay for anything anymore, which essentially means that services would at some point not be sustainable. It would break California in a way that Prop 13 has broken California. So this is a very bad measure. Before I ask for further discussion, that's my half of the presentation, I will call for public comment to see if members of the public wish to comment on this item. Any member of the public who wishes to comment on the Taxpayer Act proposal can do so now. Seeing no hands, we'll come back for discussion. Do members have comments or questions about the measure? Vice Mayor Medina?
Yeah, I support us moving to a resolution that firmly and unequivocally opposes this initiative.
Okay. Member Donahue?
You know, our, our little city just gets whiplash by state things like the elimination of the redevelopment agencies that happened to our city, where we had 90% of our city in redevelopment zone and, wow, you know, we don't get taxes and property taxes to the extent that other cities do. So this seems equally catastrophic to our city. And it's just like, it's really important that we oppose this and figure out how to help prevent this from becoming law. It just seems like it's really going to be bad for a city like ours.
Others? Anyone? No? Okay, so before us is a resolution of the City Council taking a position opposing this initiative. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion by Vice Mayor Medina and a second by Member Martinez to approve the resolution. Please call the roll.
Councilmember? Sorry. Councilmember Donahue?
Hi.
Councilmember Martinez?
Hi.
Councilmember Welch?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Hi.
And Mayor Bowers?
Hi. So we are joining the ranks of the League of Cal Cities on this, and I want to thank Sam and Nick for your service to California cities and for joining us, hopefully from a comfortable place in your home this evening for a lovely Emeryville City Council meeting. Thank you for being here.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Take care. Item 13 is department head reports. Do we have any reports this evening, Madam City Manager?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Item 14 is future agenda item requests from council members. Member Donahue, do you have any future agenda item requests? Okay, Member Welch, do you have any agenda item requests? Member Martinez? And Vice Mayor Medina? I have, I have two. One of them is just to ask to give guidance to staff to, there's been a recent spate of requests for emergency standby generators. And standby generators are approved on a one-on, a one-off basis. And so when the Air Quality Management District approves them, they cannot look at cumulative effects, nor can they actually prescribe anything related to equipment. And what I'd just like to ask is that we ask staff to look into whether or not from a land use position, we have the, similar to like a reach code, do we have the ability to regulate the type of generators that can be operated in the city? So as these, these requests increase, which their cumulative impact increases when they're turned on, and they are all turned on at the same time, usually in a PSPS emergency, can we find a way to have something that is either a higher-quality type of diesel generator, like a Tier 4, or something that is battery or renewable-powered? Can we do that through local regulation? I learned that we cannot do that through the air district. They have to grant those things under state law. So if there's support for that, I would just like, this is not an urgent item, just ask staff to do some research and let us know whether we even have the ability to regulate that, if that's within our jurisdiction. I see one, two, three, four, five. Okay, unanimous support to do that. And then the second item is related to an ongoing project that the Assistant City Attorney has been helping with. We've been going through this, and I want to thank her and the, the city attorney for their time on a longstanding item related to the decriminalization of our municipal code. The irony here is that all the folks who were here for that item earlier have left, but we've been working on that for quite a while. And we anticipate that in the next couple of months, there will be some things brought back to us for some discussion before drafting. I want to ask, in light of next month being Bike Month, I want to ask if we can peel one piece of that out, which I believe is ready for ordinance drafting, and bring that to a meeting in Bike Month, which is the rescission of elements of our municipal code related to penalizing people for bicycle licenses and registrations, which we had discussed already at the City Council, but is a historic practice of racism against young black and brown men who have bicycles, and it's a pretense historically for that. Now, the police department hasn't been citing people and doing that, but I think in Bike Month, it would be a good leadership on our part to peel that item off if we could and deal with it. Do people feel okay with that? Yes. Yes, across the board? Okay. So we have support to just peel that one item out of the rest of it and bring that up in next month for ordinance. Okay. Are there any, any other items that have come to people's minds? Okay, seeing none. Item 15 is adjournment, and the time is 8:44 PM. I thank all of you for sticking around for a long evening and wish all of you a lovely week, and happy Earth Day on Friday to everyone who celebrates, which should be all of us. So every day should be Earth Day. Have a lovely week. Take care.
Bye.